I'm Jeff Temple, I'm Vice President of GIST School Board. Matt Hay and Ken Jinks and Tony Brown are at API doing the exact same thing we're doing right now. And with me are Diane Folesi. Diane, why don't you raise your hand? Yeah, thank you. Diane managed to be here on time today, which I appreciate. Last time I gave it to her, she wasn't. And Dr. Scott. And then fellow school board members, David O'Neil and Johnny Smeca. And so, just as an introduction, we're gonna, Mr. Smeca is going to introduce you to some of our goals, and I'm gonna talk about some of the details, and Mr. O'Neil will leave us some closing remarks. In the middle, we'll have an opportunity to get feedback from you guys. So, again, thanks so much for being here, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Smeca.
Thank you, Jeff, and welcome. Thank you for taking the time out to be here tonight. We will begin with some background, followed with a recap of the board, the board's work leading up to the town hall. We will then ask you your feedback and questions. The information we gather at these town hall meetings will provide valuable input and assistance as we finalize our new governance model. As you will learn this evening, this model includes student outcome goals and superintendent constraints. Our board is committed to transformational change for our schools. Specifically, we want to ensure that each and every child learns everything they are supposed to learn during each school year, so that they start the next school year ready for continued success. A child completing first grade should have learned everything that they were supposed to, so that he or she is ready to achieve and excel in the second grade. This commitment is driving action on many fronts. For example, a team of over 100 people from our community developed a comprehensive strategic plan for GIST. That plan addresses many issues, from addressing learning gaps, educator compensation, improved facilities, to the whole child support for our children's needs outside of academic instructions. Tonight, we will discuss another key effort which will support transformational change. It concerns governance by the school board. The board seeks to implement a new innovative system called Lone Star Governance by the school board. Like the strategic plan, Lone Star Governance has a very specific goal: improving student outcomes. It uses recognized reliable data to measure how our students are doing now, and we'll talk about and explain that to you. The student outcome goals also set clearly defined annual checkpoints over the next three years. We will start where the data says we are now, to a place closer to where we want to be. In the meantime, our board will be focused on achieving these goals. We also place constraints or restrictions on the superintendent and staff. These constraints prohibit certain activities which run counter to achieving the goals. We firmly believe that implementing this new model will drive a culture of student success. Simply put, we want to be the best. Our children deserve no less. We firmly believe that adopting this governance model will help us get there. We appreciate you taking the time to be here to learn about this and to help us move forward. Now, a little background. Lone Star Governance is a unique, data-driven training initiative for school boards and superintendents. It focuses intensively on the primary objective: improving student outcomes. We do not, we did not attend this training because we were required to. Rather, after learning about the system, we saw it as another opportunity for transformational change. Why do we seek this change? Simply put, many GIST students are not learning what they are supposed to be learning each school year. This leads to declining academic performance in future years. We see this declining academic performance in subpar performance on STAR and other tests designed to measure academic achievements. It's a bad outcome for the students, our educators, and our community. As school board members, we simply cannot let this continue. Too many children are not succeeding. Our community suffers as a result. We are legally, morally, and ethically driven to do better. Lone Star Governance accomplishes this change through intense, focused, and tailored execution of the five points of Texas Framework for School Board Development: vision, accountability, structure, unity, and advocacy. In addition to our singular focus on improving student outcomes, this model provides a system for governing the secondary but vital legal and fiscal responsibilities of the board. Foundations for focus on student outcomes. The development of the 2017-2020 GIST Strategic Plan provides belief statements that guide board action. As we look to improve our practice as a board, we found these two belief statements to be powerful anchors. First one: Every child can learn. The second: Every child should have equal access to learn, grow, and become successful adults. Participating in the Lone Star Governance training introduced us to the following statement to describe a mindset of leadership. Student outcomes don't change until the adult behaviors change. Starting with me, I cannot and will not accept mediocre student outcomes. Finally, throughout the process of developing the student outcome goals, we recognize that unless we can confront ugly truths about where we are now, we will never change for the better.
Thank you, Mr. Smeca. I'm gonna go off script a little bit here and say that when we started with the student government, the Lone Star Governance, I was, and I mentioned this in a recent school board meeting, I was very resistant. I thought it was kinda stupid, and we had to go up to Houston for a full Friday, a full Saturday, right before July 4th, and it was very much, as a psychologist, it was, they used some of my own stuff on me, and it was, we had to rephrase everything that we said in I statements and take accountability for everything. And I gotta admit, for the first day, five hours, first day, I was very resistant. Now that we have started this, I think it is the most important thing that we've done since I've been on the board, and we've always had good intentions, we've always wanted the best for our students, but I think that we have floundered in, with good intentions, but not really having a target to shoot for. And we're gonna talk about some of those goals and targets today. So, now getting more into the script. So, since July of this last year, we have been discussing the outcomes that will help us determine in positive directions for our district. We have chosen three outcome goals, and a lot of people might wonder why three, and why, you know, why only three? Why not seven? Why not 10? And that's a very fair question. The reason we chose three is because we think that that is manageable and feasible and accomplishable, and we equate it to having 20 gallons of gas. We could put a gallon in 20 cars, and they can all get started and go a few miles, but then they're gonna stop working. Or, we could put 20 gallons of gas in three cars, and we're gonna go a lot further with all three of those cars. And that's to also say that if we, when we accomplish our goal, we can then set up another goal, and so, we can always have those three goals, but we want to be able to accomplish something. We want to keep our eye on the prize, opposed to, again, floundering, doing our best, best intentions, but not having specific targets and goals that are feasible. We received input from GIST's educational staff to understand that reading and literacy are the foundations for profound learning. This information helped us to determine early childhood literacy must be our first student outcome goal. So, number one, and I'm gonna skip slides here. I might be ahead of myself. I'm not? I'm good there? All right. So, the percentage of students in third grade reading scoring meets grade level, as measured by the state assessment, STAR, will be 56% by the end of the 2019-2020 school year. Bear with me on that 56% here for a second. So, we're gonna break it down. Some of you may not be aware of this, but the state has four categories of STAR test results: master's grade level, meets grade level, approaches grade level, and does not meet grade level. The test currently allows students to pass if they score approaches grade level. Approaches is less than meets, so again, keep in mind that 56% with meets. It means that a student will require remedial learning in order to be ready for the next grade level. To us, meets or masters is where we want our children to be, not just approaches. So although almost all our elementary schools met standard, only 41% of the third grade students attending GIST schools scored well enough on the STAR reading test to show they had met or mastered what they were supposed to learn that year, ready for fourth grade and beyond. Some of you may be surprised by that low number, I know we were. Moreover, this met and masters number for third grade reading is not an outlier, it is consistent with GIST test results on all STAR tests and high school end-of-course exams. In addition, the score includes all GIST elementary schools. Some schools exceeded 41%, and some schools were lower. As a board, we have chosen not to accept mediocre. We will not accept mediocre student outcomes simply because others do. Doing so runs counter to everything we believe. You may think the goal, taking that 41% number to 56% number, is not enough, and that's over three years. We certainly felt that way when we worked on this goal, and we had pretty vibrant conversations to that end. However, we had many long meetings, and we talked to numbers of staff that are, and talked about the numbers with staff that could be achievable, that were realistic, that were feasible, and we all hope that this effort will drive change, but gets us there much sooner. So when we do get there, whether it's one, two, or three years, we would promptly set new goals to take that number to higher levels. This will be a continuous process to ensure student improvements. In fact, our ultimate goal, of course, is 100% that every single kid at GIST meets our masters student outcome goals, right? Meets our masters grade level, that is. That's where we want to be, that's where we should be, and getting from here to there will take some time. Each student outcome goal is supported by three goal progress measures. The goal progress measures are GPMs, were developed by GIST staff led by Dr. Mote and Assistant Superintendent Dr. Scott. The GPMs will be presented at board meetings on a schedule to determine if adult behaviors are making a difference in student outcomes. Again, going back to what Mr. Smeca said, that we have to change if we want our students to change. Information we are providing at the campus level, as well as at the district level overall, we won't declare victory simply because of good progress at one or two campuses that improves the numbers overall. Rather, we expect to see continuous improvement at all schools. The information provided by staff and board discussion about the goal progress measures should reflect 50% of the school board meetings. So, keep that in mind. So when we have board discussion, we want 50% of our discussion to be about these student outcome goals. We want to stop talking in our school board meeting about whether or not we should have one ply or two ply toilet paper, or whether or not we're approving a $20,000 improvement to a stadium. That needs to be discussed, and it needs to be considered, but what we're there for is to make our students better academically. All right. Goal progress measures 1.1. So am I still in the right place here, Duncan? All right. Just yell at me when I need to move. All right. 1.1, the percentage of pre-K students in grades pre-K3 and pre-K4 who master SLOs, that's student learning objectives, will increase from 40% to 80% by the end of 2020. The annual target, school year 2016 to 2017 baseline, is 40%. By 2017-2018, we want it to rise to 60%. The goal for 2018, 19, is 70%, and 19-20 is 80%. 1.2, the percentage of students in grades kindergarten and 1 who master student learning objectives will increase from 40% to 80% by the end of 2020. Annual targets, again, 2016-17, 40% is our baseline. We want to increase that by 10% each year over the next three years. By now, you may be wondering what student learning objectives or SLOs are, so it's a measure to assess teachers' contributions to student achievement of content standards and are used in our educator evaluation system. At the heart of a student learning objective is a specific learning goal and a specific measure of student learning used to track progress toward that goal. Each of our GIST campuses has learning focus. Based on the campus focus and standards for each grade or class content, teachers have developed three SLOs. They have been reviewed and approved by campus administration, and they will help us measure student learning that is a direct result of this year's instruction. Goal 1.3, the percentage of students in grades 2 who are reading at or above grade level on the BOY beginning of year Renaissance learning will increase from 44% to 60% by the end of 2020. Annual targets, at baseline, were 44%. So that's 16-17, 17-18, we want it to rise to 50%, 18-19, 55%, and 19-20, 60%. Student outcome, goal 2 now, I'm gonna switch this, Diane, even though you didn't, even though you didn't tell me, I'm gonna switch it.
Good. I'll say it.
All right.
Let me have to switch it for me.
I mean, if you wouldn't mind standing right behind me. No. Here, here. All right.
We're here to start.
So, student outcome 2 focuses on the readiness of students to fully understand and utilize literacy and numeracy to participate successfully in high school. I gotta admit, I did not know numeracy was a word. Just throw that out there. So 2 is percent of students at the completion of grade 9 who score meets grade level or masters grade level in Algebra 1 and English 1 will increase from 18% to 50% by the end of the 2019-2020 school year. GIST student outcome goal number 2 is unique in that we, as a board, are not, are assessing both Algebra 1 and English 1 performance on the STAR, so we're not content with just one. We're taking into consideration both English 1 and Algebra 1. Again, we have chosen to monitor only masters and meets. So approaches, that minimal standard that is acceptable to many districts and to the state, is not acceptable to us, has to meet our master to be included in our goals. The combination of the two assessments, again, Algebra and English, reveals that GIST students struggle to master and meet grade level performance. It became a true call to action for us to find out that only 18% of our ninth graders have met grade level performance on both English 1 and Algebra 1. We have to improve these, and that begins with me, and all of us here, but with me, and I think that's, that's clear, that we all take responsibility. So, goal progress measures, 2.1, the percentage of eighth grade students who score meets grade level on the first administration of the Algebra 1 EOC will increase from 74% to 80% by the end of the 2020 school year. At baseline, again, 74%. By the end of 18, we want 76%, then 78% by 2019, and 80% by 2020. 2.2, the percentage of 3-8th grade English language learners, ELL, scoring approaching meets or masters on reading or writing STAR will increase from 54% to 60% by the end of the 2020 year. 2017 baseline is 54%, then we expect a 2% increase every year thereafter for the next three years. 2.3, the percentage of students in grades 3 to 8 who are on track to meet or master both reading and math STAR will increase from 43% to 50% by the end of the 2020 school year. Baseline, 43%. By the end of 18, 45%. End of 19, 48%. End of 2020 is 50%. On track to meet or master is a measure, you might have heard me say that. On track to meet or master is a measure reflected in the college and career readiness measure of STAR. We measure not only the student performance, but also the rate of students' improvement all through grades 3 to 8. Even if the student does not score meets or master, their rate of improvement signals that they are on track to meet or master. So again, measuring stuff, stuff that we have not done well enough up to this point. The third GIST student outcome goal, look at that, is an expression of our mission: to educate, engage, and empower every student for a lifetime of excellence. The student outcome goal utilizes the New State Accountability Measure of College, Career, and Military Readiness, our CCMR. So, 3 is, goal 3 is to, percent of college and career-ready graduates calculated as a percent of annual graduates who accomplished at least one of the following will increase from 77.8% to 90% by the year, by the end of the 2019-2020 school year. 1, met or exceeded the Texas Success Initiative, TSI criteria, in both ELA reading and mathematics on the TSIA SAT or ACT. So again, you guys know SAT and ACT, the TSIA is Texas Success Initiative Assessment. Number 2, completed and earned credit for at least two advanced dual, credit dual enrollment courses. So that's advanced slash dual dash credit slash dual enrollment courses. Number 3, enrolled in a coherent sequence of CTE courses. So we recognize that at 77.8%, this student outcome goal appears to be more advanced than our other two goals. However, if we have every expectation that each student be prepared for a life of excellence, we must do better. The conversations, discussion, and expectations that we have as a board are intended to drive how the adults in our system work with students to meet the goals. Goal progress measures, 3.1, the percentage of 9th to 12th grade students meeting TSI criteria in reading and math will increase from 40 to 50% by the end of the 2020 school year. Baseline is 40%. Increase by 2018, 43%, then 46%, then 15% by the end of 2020. The percentage of 9th to 12th grade students enrolled in dual credit courses will increase from 42% to 53% by the end of the 2020 school year. Again, baseline at 42%, then we expect a 4% increase thereafter with 53% at the end of the 2020 school year. Sorry, you're probably sick of hearing my voice, I still have a couple pages to go, so bear with me, and thank you. All right. And by the way, we promised, this is a script, but we promised to actually engage you guys, so just, again, bear with us. 3.3, the percentage of 9th to 12th grade students earning a 3 or higher on the AP examinations will increase from 34% to 50% by the end of the 2020 school year. Our baseline is 34%, and then we expect it to, we have a goal of 40% by the end of 2018, 45% by the end of 2019, and 15% by the end of 2020. This presentation of student outcome goals and goal progress measures has probably caused some of you to ask why we are not shooting for 100%, and I think that's a very fair question. So we did ask the same question when we met with them, and that's when they introduced us to, some of us, I do this for a living, is our SMART goals. So, are you guys familiar with SMART? Okay, so, yeah, there it is. So it has to be specific, measurable, achievable, results-focused, and time-bound. So I'm gonna give, as an example, I'm gonna give Mr. O'Neil something, and I'm gonna tell him to throw it at the target. At the target. Exactly. So, it has to be specific, right? Goals should be simplistically written and clearly defined what we're going to do, it has to be measurable, right? So it has to be, so that you have tangible evidence that you have accomplished the goal. Usually, the entire goal statement is a measure for the project, but there are usually several short-term or smaller measurements built into the goal. And I think really importantly, it has to be achievable. So now, Mr. O'Neil, where's your? Get the spin target. Yeah, so that's really easy, there's no satisfaction in doing it. Now, Mr. O'Neil, hit the target. That was better than I thought. All right. So, that, well, first one was too short, right? It was too easy, it doesn't do anything, it doesn't increase our chances, not as if we wanted to increase it by 2% or something. The last one was trying to increase it by 100%. Now, hit the target. Don't let me down. That was close. All right. So now, that is the achievable thing, that's what we want to do. We want it to not only stretch us slightly, so we feel challenged, but we want it to find well enough so that we can achieve them. So we must possess the appropriate knowledge, skills, and abilities needed to achieve that goal, and our, as for results-focused, we should be able to, we should measure outcomes, not activities. Especially as a board, what we're interested in is the outcomes. We are not teachers. Some of us have, including me, have zero experience with education at this level, and I don't want to. I have a job during the day, and I don't want to be experts. You guys are the experts, and that's why you guys work here, and so you guys tell us what we need to measure, what we need, what activity, and then we'll pay attention to the overall outcome goal. And they should be timed down. So they should be linked to a timeframe that creates a practical sense of urgency or results in tension between the current reality and the vision of the goal. Without that tension, the goal is unlikely to produce a relevant outcome. All right. We recognize that we must develop capacity to achieve these student outcome goals and goal progress measures. We have authority and will adjust the goals once we exceed any annual measure. So for instance, if we did set up that goal too low, and we hit it right away, hope that happens, then we'll, then we'll reevaluate and set the goal to be that much more difficult. Not so much that Mr. O'Neil can't hit it, but that he can. And we'll do that, the evaluation will happen, will be ongoing. So we have shared our three student outcome goals: early childhood literacy, high school readiness, and college career and military readiness, life readiness, really. So if you've been asked to share your thoughts on our three student outcome goals, it says you have been asked, I don't think we've asked them yet.
We will.
We will, so, but it says you have, I just went, oh, it'd be accurate, to my audience. All right. So, all right, so, please share your thoughts and any questions you might have about these goals. We'll record all comments and questions. If we can answer your questions tonight with the folks in the crowd, we'll do so, and will also be recorded. We'll post comments, questions, and answers on our website. We will engage in a discussion of the comments, questions, and answers at both our finance meeting and regular board meeting later this month. So, please, give us feedback, give us, engage us, we want this to be part of, we want y'all to be part of what we do in this district. And, let's see, what else? That'll inform from here on out. God, I am so glad, I'm done talking, and then, but I guess I still have to answer questions. All right, go for it, Doc Scott.
All right. Dr. Temple has shared a lot of information with you related to our student outcome goals and the goal progress measures. So, at this time, what questions do you have, and what clarification can we provide? Do you want to first talk at your table with your table mates to just have some? Okay, Ms. Cor.
Okay. This is all good and well, but I'm a practical person, so this is just pie in the sky, this is what we want to do. What are we doing within our schools to make any, what changes are being made in the classroom? Are they set amongst each campus? Are there new trainings taking with the teachers? I mean, what, what is changing?
That is correct. We, as far as the literacy is concerned, we have a major literacy initiative that is going on. Our school board so generously approved dollars for us to invest in Scholastic, which is renowned for its literacy training, and so our teachers are being coached by some of the best coaches in the United States, and they know that, that our goal is to have every third grader reading on grade level by the end of third grade. So that's a concrete something that is transpiring and taking place at this particular time. In addition to that, our teachers participate in professional learning communities where they take the common assessments that we have, or the curriculum-based assessments that are administered, and the, and the teachers in the room can speak to this, but they take those assessments and they discuss those in their PLCs and make adjustments in terms of what has to be re-taught, so that we can get more students aligned to meeting the goals that have been set forth, or being set forth by our school board. Each campus has a specific set of goals, because as, I think Dr. Temple or one of them shared, different campuses are different places as far as the progress is concerned. So campuses have set specific goals for what they are working on, and Mr. Pillar can attest to, we have accountability meetings, or they have accountability meetings with the leadership team, which includes the superintendent, Diane Folesi, myself, and Dr. Lonius, and that's where we get updates as to the progress that is being made at the campus level, per campus level. And specifically, we ask them, what resources do they need, what do we need to provide for the campus, for the teachers, to be able to do the job that they need to help the kids?
And that is something that is happening now that wasn't happening in the past?
That, well, the accountability meetings happened in the past, that has always been part of our process, but we're That has always been part of our process, but we're having different conversations around those accountability meetings. And part of those conversations, we're not having conversations about how many students are approaching grade level. We are talking about how many students are meeting grade level and how many students are above grade level. And the other thing that we have done within our district, when we do our common assessments or our curriculum-based assessments, we set our standard at our current academic standard in terms of if seventy is passing for us, that's what we set as passing on our curriculum-based assessments, whereas some places set the star standard, which is a lower standard. So we set a higher standard. Those are some of the things that are being done. Mr. Pillar.
Give you an example, which you're talking about. Cat sitting here in Spalley, I'm calling you on Spalley. Is currently working with our middle school biology teachers to help keep their group aligned, to help reach the goal that they're referring to, have more on grade level, more passing the algebra, English, so forth, that kind of group. So we're getting, there's a lot more curriculum-based discussions and less managing.
Yes, Ms. Tedlin.
I think it was mentioned by a Mr., who is developing the SLOs and how are they being measured?
The teachers develop the SLOs because the teachers know what the, what the students' needs are, and so our teachers have been trained by a group called TEXI. Is, the TEXI is the Teacher's Center for Educator Excellence, and they, so I'm sharing that so that people don't think that teachers just pull an SLO out of the air. They have been given specific training, and they understand that the whole purpose of the SLO is to grow students and to help them reach higher levels of understanding. And so there's a measure or a, or a set of protocols that the teachers have to follow and the administration has to follow in order to say this SLO is rigorous and provides an opportunity for a student to grow, because it's not a good SLO if all of the kids are making a hundred. You know, that's, that's too easy, and it's not a good SLO if every kid is making a zero. So we need to have a spin within the SLO to show that there is a need to put energy and effort in this particular objective for the students.
So it's, is it, each student has their own SLO?
No.
The classroom or the session?
The classroom. The content, each content area. In fact, our teachers have three. There's one that's a district focus, and the reason it's a district focus is we noticed a trend district-wide that we needed to focus on analyzing, knowing how to analyze things. And so every content area has embraced how to analyze in some form or format within their content area. Then there's a campus SLO. The campus looks at its performance and picks an area to focus. And then there's the teacher's SLO, where the teacher analyzes within the classroom and makes a determination, wow, this group of kids really needs more support, and they pick an area. And this year is our, last year, we polited the electives, but this year, we're going full force in terms of all of our teachers write SLOs.
And then how are they measured?
They are measured, okay, in different PLCs. I'm thinking that they're determining... In different PLCs, they make the determination if they're going to use a curriculum-based assessment, or if they're going to use some type of formalized test, or if they're going to use a portfolio, but we, we try to give the freedom to the teachers to determine how they will be measured as opposed to our saying how they will be measured, because the bottom line is the teacher makes the instructional adjustment every single day, and, and really, every class period, if it's at the secondary level, because what happens in first period and what happens in third period, there are adjustments being made all along throughout the day. But Mr. Pillar, do you want to add anything to the SLOs?
I can tell you, SLOs are written with a student outcome assessment. You expect that student outcome, and what do we want to see come out of it? And the SMART goal is used, so I guess, so it has to be a table, it's got to be measurable, things like that, and they submit it through an online system we have, and administration looks at, looks at, is it feasible, is it possible, is it understandable, is it fit within the teach, is it fit within the curriculum? And in our case, at the high school, I can speak like Captain's biology, for instance, biology teachers, most of those are identical when it comes to the SLOs, because they look at the data of the students and say, where do we have the shortcomings? Things like that. So the idea was addressed not with the last class day or the classroom, but what is the class coming into us, the current class, measuring the kids against themselves, how do we get the next level?
But that's talking about secondary SLOs. The only time SLOs show up in the goals are in your early literacy.
Yes, and Ms. Patrick does a wonderful job. The early literacy piece, the teachers set the SLOs. We brought the consultant in, and she worked with everyone at Moody Early Childhood Center, and they are our model in terms of referencing the development of SLOs. In fact, we're sharing in your light, it's, it's in here in the plan or the goals at the early level, but this is something, again, we're sharing, that we're doing district-wide. It's a district-wide initiative. Every teacher writes SLOs in Palestine and in school districts.
So my question though was, using SLOs in early literacy sections, the way the progress measure is written, does it mean you have SLOs around literacy? So you have two SLOs in one point one and one point two, and then you're using Renaissance learning in one point three. I'm, I'm wondering if there's more direction for teachers that their SLOs need to scaffold into Renaissance learning so that these are true progress measures?
Okay, I'll make a note of that because basically, this feedback came to us from the early literacy teachers, so I will make a note to take that back. Thank you. And get back to that. Did you write that down from Ms. Corr? Okay. Yes, Ms. Wagner?
So the overall flow of these goals for students, I think, sound wonderful. I think it's great that we're looking to build up our students and make them more successful. Kind of leading off of what Lynn said, though, my concern would be those students that are struggling to meet those goals, you know, you can have your student learning objectives, you can cross-reference them to other schools or with the upper-level schools, but is there truly money in the system, or can money be put aside? If there needs to be tutors that need to be brought in, because some students transfer into our school district from other districts, they come in from other countries into our districts, they come from private schools into our district, and it's harder to work with all those students with just a single SLO for a classroom to have all those students move forward in the same direction, but it's a lot to put on. One teacher's polite to say, here, you know, you have five students that really are not going to meet that, you've got to figure that out, and also help push all those other students up to that point. And so I guess my thought comment is somehow there needs to be some extra personnel actually brought in to help that.
Yeah, if I can just start, start addressing it, I don't think it's going to answer your question fully, but I think one of the points of having this is actually having SMART goals and having a target is now if we can better determine what we do need in those classes going forward. Now, Dr. Scott, and as we'll see, we'll tell you more about what we're doing right now, but the whole point of this is now say, if we're not reaching what we need here, what do we need to reach that goal?
And that's really where my comment, I mean, I don't think you can answer me today. I think it's something to keep in that list of...
No, absolutely. I, I, so that is the point of doing this, is to determine what we need, the trackers, right, what we do need determined, and I don't think the answer to this question is what we probably need.
Yeah, so I guess that's more, you know, between the things that we said, I think those need to be points.
Yes.
That need to be written down in your list of comments from today's meeting.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Scott, can I do an example of it?
When you, exactly what you say is what will occur. We give example, for our PLC, we've determined that we weren't necessarily using our ESO resources perfectly for students where we thought they were maybe needed. The data showed that we needed to adjust, and we moved resources around to adjust before we had to add anything. So it goes, it goes along with that. We had to have the data to show, it's not like I feel, it's got to be like, hey, we have a problem there. And that's, that's what this will allow. And SLOs are the, definitely the way to go, and to be able to find out where the occurrence is, it's being based on the experts, the teachers.
Yeah, and all that, again, is saying where, where, and I think this is what you guys are saying, and would agree with, is that it's not that we're going to do those types of things in the past, we do, but I think it was more flexible than, than, okay, this is, we found this, okay, so let's put this fire out, we need to do this here, we found this, okay, we need to do this here, as opposed to coordinating an effort to really monitor our progress to specific goals.
Any additional comments on number, on question number one, which had to do with our discussion, because I have another question. And my next question is, after hearing about the student outcome goals and the goal progress measures, and knowing that we're focused on three, are you comfortable with the three? The early literacy, the high school readiness, and college and career military readiness. Are you comfortable with those, or are those important? Those three.
I'll say yes. Say a very yes.
And you can also comment on this after today, so just in case something comes to you a little bit.
And then the last question I have is, how can your school board best communicate the progress of these student outcome goals and goal progress measures? So once these goals become part of our district, how do you want your school board to communicate them to the public?
Let me put them on the website.
And if you have more information for this, because I, I think this is one thing that we have not been great at, is communicating. I think we're very transparent in this, but I think sometimes that gets lost in our inability to sometimes communicate. So any advice you guys have for that, the website, whatever else you guys think, please, throw over.
I watched your board meeting last time, and you had a bunch of notes, all these questions, because you hadn't done this part yet, right? That was basically what that was about.
That's right.
And that's okay, you expect that, because there's a process you have to follow. So the point, I guess, in terms of the communication, you're going to get these numbers presented and reviewed on a monthly basis, I presume, or however frequent it is with board meetings, whatever that tally is, sticking that out there on some page, some tab somewhere, guides the board would be very helpful, because hearing is one thing, being able to sort of look at it and think about it is another thing.
That's smart, and it keeps us accountable. I mean, I, I mean, just thinking out loud is having a board in front of us, it's always on TV where we are in the school. I mean, I'm serious, I mean, that's, that's what I would like to see, so I think that's a great idea.
Measurable, as you said.
Yeah, and always there.
Well, I don't, I don't really think you can plaster it out there enough. I mean, stick it on the Facebook page, put it out on the weekly, the email that comes out whenever you've got an update, I mean, send it to the schools to distribute in their emails. I mean, you, nobody's going to say we communicate too much, but y'all hear it all the time, that you don't do a good enough job, no matter how hard we try. So I think the more places you put it...
And I would add on to that, I think the problem with the website is there's so much information, not everybody knows where to look on the website to find the information that you're presenting.
But it's better than the last two months.
It is, it is, and I get a lot of feedback, like simple things that, you know, should just be quite light, and things have gotten better, but I think in trying to share this information and getting support and showing that we are making progress, make your own Facebook page, and no comments, but just, here's our goal, you know, here's the, you know, the minute, the, thank you, meeting minutes. You know, just no comments, but just here, it's right here, just go right to that page if you want flash news from our school board.
I really liked your whole, thank you, Monica. Scott.
I just have a quick question. I think these are great goals. I'm just a little concerned that they may be too ambitious, because we have set a goal for 2017 and 18, and you've already mentioned that, you know, you're still assessing the needs, and these haven't even been approved yet, so have you considered the timeline having to be a little bit longer? Because if you're saying you're assessing this monthly, we're already halfway through the school year, so my question would really be, when was the last time you assessed it? Have you been assessed it? Because this 2017, 18 is our first goal, so I would have expected already that you guys have assessed it, and you would be ready to share, have, are we approaching that sixty percent? Are we at mark with all of these goals right now?
So some of that was, at least apparently where I'm wrong, I actually agree with you, I think that it was a little bit too ambitious, I think this was a negotiation that we had for school board, but I, I'm happy with that choice, and a lot of it is what you did, because it's based on increments that we've made over the past few years, and it looks like that's the trajectory, based on, based on the data we have from the last few years, it's been growing by that amount. Now, then, I think a comeback to that would be, well, then what are you even doing if you just expect this increment? At some point, if we go on this trajectory, we're going to hit a ceiling unless we continue, unless we do something to start this to grow. So I, I think that it is a reasonable expectation despite yours and my concern about the immediacy of it, but I, I think that based on prior few years' trajectory, and I think if we can't do that, we could a little bit, a little bit more. But someone else?
Captain, the correct explanation, the SLOs, that's what it's being based on, right? SLOs are known by administration, and they're being monitored by administration, so when we go into observations, we're looking for the movement towards the meeting of goals in addition to in districts, especially through eighth grade, as their benchmark testing, it's going to show significant change. So they should, yes, they should have some data at this point administratively to be able to say if we're getting closer to that line. And I believe that's one of the reasons why they got sixty to ten, because the idea is going to be at eighty, and you're going to see that whenever you implement, you see the largest change right away, and then you fall off in the sense of growth, and you have to keep that momentum forward. So I understand where you're coming from, too. As an application, no way, but it's not something like, we, we started, as I said, Dr. Scott said, we started when it's an elective area, it's not just a little, so we anticipated large gain by implementing this year. Do we have all data, but do we, are we moving towards that to make that happen?
Sorry, I just have more questions. Okay, sorry. So, so I would go with a little bit of that. I love headwork. I guess my only question, I have two around the SLOs. So one, what was your reasoning behind choosing SLOs as a partner's measure? Especially, because I know you mentioned it, when it comes down to the teacher being able to make their assessment, have discussions about the assessment, be then charged to adjust the curriculum with their assessment, there is so much subjectivity. Why is that your measure if there's so much room for subjectivity? And then the other question is, at the district level, how are you assessing the fidelity of the implementation of the SLO program?
I think that's actually just to your part, and if someone else wants to. I think the first part might be, I don't know what else we have to do some of that, so, and that might be my interest, so that would be something that's leading to maybe that better idea, if I can, that something might be better. I think you're right, criticism of the needs and check in, that's accurate. So I think if you have better ideas, please give them to us. The second part, but...
You have to restate the second part.
Sarah, I'm telling you, I need, I need...
Effective December the eleventh, we'll have the TEXI team here, and the TEXI team there in will be... will be working with us to structure, to put structures and infrastructure in place to help continue to develop our students in terms of their understanding and knowledge around the S L O process, and also to provide service coaches, and that's, that's what happened. Um, so, so, we're taking here, um, Galveston and Tinkus District, Drew Techsey is going to be the representative of
Seven point two minutes out.
And so, and so, our focus is equity teaching and learning, and part of that process is S L O process. So, we will be putting lots of dollars and energies, because we will see that this will help us make the greatest gain. In addition to your question, uh, your, your comments, and they're very wonderful. Uh, we want to develop the trust and the desire of the teachers to make sure that there's
You can talk about that.
Yes, Dr. Scott specifically, uh, are the S L Os, I want to say, and I could be wrong, but haven't they been, um, studied by the superior house?
I think, from a research-based perspective, dear, implementing the practice on research-based, we say. So, and, and I understand what you're saying, the bottom line is, we just have to help our teachers feel confident and get away from necessarily the subjectivity, but to have ownership, have the ability, have the work and have the craft of teaching, and base their objectives around what the kids are not necessarily going to do for them in terms of, of, because, because through the T S L grant, which is with Techsey, we will be able to incentivize teachers, much like we say, we're grading, and we pay for performance, if you do well, we give additional.
So, to go back to that, the superior house, that will only support things that are recognized as best practices, that are supported by research and best practices.
That's correct, that's correct.
Thank you.
And I think this floor, when you talk about struggling students, need more money, more attentiveness to that, this grant will provide that, not just for struggling students, but for all students. As Dr. Scott said, the majority of this grant centers around human capital management system, besides building capacity. With, well within this grant, and as Dr. Scott said, we need with Techsey to formalize all of this next week for several days. And coaching staff development, not just around S L Os, but around everything, P L Cs, which the pillar was talking about that. So, that's where the infusion of money will come from. We've been working on this initiative for well over a year, partnered with other school districts, because as you know, money now from the federal government, with our president specifically, is getting tighter and tighter. So, we feel like we are very fortunate, we certainly plan for this grant, Dr. Scott and her team wrote this grant, of course, with information centers around human capital management. I had a lot of input in this grant. We partnered with other local universities specifically, we partnered with Galveston College, we are partnering with the University of Houston Clearland, because there has to have a higher education. So, more and more of this information, as this rolls out, which as I said, they're coming next week, we will be putting together information out and sharing that with, of course, first, our staff. So, Miss Conley, if you, you know, are having questions about S L Os, there is a training process that will happen. There will be coaches that will be hired, and there will be pathways for teachers. I mean, it's a very comprehensive program to grow our staff. So, we are looking very forward to that. We just found out we received this grant probably about a month ago, and the reason why we've talked about it a lot in the public is because we will get to the nuts and bolts of what this is next week with Techsey, who is the group we partner with. And there are other school districts that are staying grant with us. That's the way to go, that we learn and apply for grants, who have a much better shot at actually getting this grant. If you don't go it alone, and Techsey is an organization, is a region service, I mean, a region center, that has been very successful in attaining the tenth grants in the past, which, of course, we don't necessarily have a tip.
I, I guess I can make a permit that for the goals that are written here, we at our level, at a support center level, are making sure that there are resources available to help support the teachers, and we may need to.
Okay, sorry, I could be a little bit of a, and I'm, I'm not an educator, so y'all can help me out on this, but let's just, let's say we're dealing with, with a first grade, and I don't know how this works. So, how many, how many, do, do the teachers write one S L O for the year? Do they write them, do they have several S L Os throughout the year?
They have three.
They have three, okay. Who specifically is in charge of reviewing each individual teacher's S L O? The principal? To review each and every S L O? And she, not to, not to say our principal don't know what her mission is. The principal knows what a first grade classroom should be, what, if, if those S L Os are in line with where they should be. Because being a little bit of a double advocate on seeing that we're trying to up our standards, up it, up it, up it, and the teachers, I'm sure feel that pressure, because it falls on them. So, what, since it, it, it sounds just concrete, I mean, we have that from someone else, these S L Os make me nervous, because they feel subjective. So, what is to prevent a teacher from dumbing down their S L O so, oh, my, oh, gee, we succeeded? Without, you know, how, what keeps that from happening?
They are monitored, uh, they are monitored by us, because we can see every S L O in it. So, we, we commit with the principal here recently, was last one person. We met, we met with the principal last week, where we literally had had every S L O that we had a question about, and, and made the suggestion that we provide additional training for that particular campus, because evidently, based on what we were able to see, there wasn't the clarity that we thought there should be. So, we monitor them as well.
Okay. That was, that was my biggest concern, and I don't have a suggestion for something otherwise, but everything else feels very concrete, and the S L Os, yeah. And it just, yeah, I don't have a big suggestion.
Our, our intent, and we've always taken, well, for the last few years, we've been, uh, we've always tried to make sure our teachers have the best professional learning experiences possible.
Absolutely.
We don't go through training.
Most will take it and go with it, but what if we have the ones who are trained?
But we monitor, and principals, and we monitor through the principals, because when the principals come in for their accountability, we need to be asked specific questions around, you know, the things that we are placing emphasis on. Because now my question in our accountability is not about how many kids are approached, I'm saying, okay, where are your fees? Are you going to be on target for the objective goals?
Conversations, well, direction change, as this process unfolds, and then we'll continue to adjust. So, should the principals talk to you? Do your deals?
I just have one last question. Um, number three, the career and college readiness goal. Um, you mentioned that the goal was at least one of the three, but to meet or exceed, um, Texas Success Initiative, so T S I, S A T or A C T. Um, I was just curious what support systems you have in place currently to, um, support this goal? Students performing higher on P S I, or higher on A C T or S A T, um, what support systems are that are new this year?
What do you think?
Yeah. Teacher? Well, I mean, I guess it would be both, teachers and students, because they work together, right? One improves, so you would help the other, right?
Well, first of all, the S L O process is the thing, the thing is, remember, T S I, you know, we test everybody that's at grade level or above, sorry, 10th grade. Uh, we don't test everybody, because what this test is, some students that are in reading components, we go above, we test. But we start in 10th grade, and then every year, you know, now we continue testing through changes. Technically, when you go to graduate, at the 12th year, that's when you should pass the, the T S I test in particular. Uh, but the T S I starts in 10th grade, the P S A T takes, everyone in 10th grade takes it in 10th grade. So, we keep that measured, and so we know where they are here and forth. The issue there is that the curriculum's got to improve in classes, in particular, our regular classes, to order improve, to get those students to next level. So, that's where the S L Os come into play, because if we improve, for instance, S A T, only test their geometry on math class. So, our algebra geometry key, well, that's the majority of students, is only freshman sophomore year. So, if we're going to get them to that level, that's going to happen during the first two years of management. So, yeah, that's the whole purpose of the S L Os at the high school level. That's why we're measuring this right now, is to make sure that the students are given the opportunity to do more direct instruction, prepare for secondary level.
Well, the P S A T test and the information that it can give you, gives you a wealth of information, absolutely a wealth of information for every individual student. The S A T and the A C T, you don't have to measure those two separately. There is a rubric that tells you the relationship and the predictability of what you score on in S A T, and then what you would score on in A C T, and how they are so closely related. And for many years, I was the A C T and the S A T coordinator on this campus, and
Something was possible, we do offer this year the, um, S A T prep course in school day. And this summer, we're actually piloting a program for current ninth graders to take over the summer, that we offer. Has been offered, because we just finally got their approval, I believe. Dr. Scott on Earthside, and Cissy Matthews on College Side, they'll offer a class in the summer called Psychology 1301, and you end up with the T S I test, to see how, how early we can start our students, how early we can get our students involved, and set them see this example, what's expected, what, what we're striving for is over. So, there is additional, and the Psychology 1301 is a prep course for that test. So, we're trying what we can to expand and use the college in particular for the T S I. Because the T S I is a much better indicator of really, if I prepare to go the first year of college, and the S A T and the A C T. The A C T and the S A T are how well I learned my sophomore year, does that make sense? Doesn't it just for junior and senior year?
And those two tests, of course, measure acquired cumulative knowledge of the time. Some like give, you know, just a specific test, but the other thing, as far as the S A T and the A C T go, over time, at law high school, there have been many different stages in time where we have offered those prep classes, at the middle school level, at one judge. Yeah, four or five years ago, at the middle school levels, we started developing students through the Nemso program, or the one where you pay big bucks to go. I mean, we had them with this book right at the middle school. So, so, I mean.
I know what they measure, and I know I can look at it, I'm very familiar with all three of them. Um, I get a little nervous, and this is just a recommendation, when you're communicating this, it appears, and I might be kind of wrong, but I get the sense that a lot of your answers are S L Os. Oh, how are you doing this, S L Os? Oh, how are you measuring this, how are you supporting teachers, S L Os? How are we going to hit a teacher higher, S L Os? That is a term and an acronym that our community does not know. Our parents do not know that, some of our stakeholders probably don't know that. And so, give that to your answer to every single question, that every single one of you is
I don't even think we said that.
No, I'm
The question of S L Os, not student learning objectives.
We did, but I think we also have
And it's not like, it's not an obvious, it's just saying that we're hearing it repetitively, and, I mean, part of it all is repetitively.
Yeah.
And so, and I'm not saying that's all we're doing, because I obviously have a different perspective as, you know, an educator in the district, and I know that's not all we're doing, but as it's being communicated, I've heard it repetitively, and our community really doesn't know what S L Os are. And I can tell you that a lot of our teachers can't even articulate what S L Os are either, and I work with them on a daily basis. So, just when you're communicating this to the public, having a very concise and user-friendly terms and explanations for S L Os is going to be very important, because it is a great process. Um, in terms specifically to know this third goal, sitting for a P S A T is not a way to help kids do better at P S A T. Programs that took place four or five years ago, that is great, I wish there were more of them, but if, if that was successful, then it wouldn't be able right now. And so, the idea is, back to this action piece, what is actually happening? Have you hired new personnel? I know last, um, last fall, we had a grant to have S A T prep classes, and I can tell you, they were, you know, very low numbers. These were students who were, you know, both ends of the spectrum, you know, well, full of families, and some that, you know, were very low, so, yeah, I don't know. And, you know, that's all we need, those type of action items, what's happening? What type of specific student to student, teacher to student, not, we're going to try to teach us not to let them forget. What is specifically happening? And I think that's, you know, as now parent in the district, I want to know specifics, not just, oh, teachers are writing goals, and we're going to talk about them in meetings. And what can my student do? What can my child do? What is there for them to get better support systems?
Not talking about your child at this age, or his adult children in general.
I'm just saying, all parents.
It's very
Yeah, just in general, right? And, I mean, I'm, I'm not a parent of your children, but I would imagine that, you know, if even teachers can be as swift to answer, you know, I'm calling parents all the time, and they're asking questions, and I want to be able to have a little teaching that says, this, oh, your student has trouble with algebra? Well, you know, there's this great S A T prep course that happens every Saturday. I know on this date and this week, they're working on algebra. Or I know, you know, X, Y, and Z, you know, those are actual items. Instead of teachers sitting there, we're talking about it.
You did hear what I said, this year you entered the, the S A T prep, uh, the math teacher and the English teacher, because we realize we can't teach both. And then in the summer, we're putting in T S I, or as you said, their actual items occurring beyond the S L Os is the part of the curriculum in the school. That's not the actual item that you're talking about, you're mixing two things. You're right, there's more multiple things happening.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a general idea. I know, you know, your question was, what's the actual, I mean, grade, you're right. Yeah, you know, and I, and I'm not meaning to, it's not specific to number three, it's just, it's just a general thing, because sometimes when something's communicated, I'm like, I know, but I know sometimes
Sorry to interrupt, but I will say this, that, that's kind of, so the purpose of this is to adopt our goals and communicate our goals, and get that from y'all, and I think some of the meat that is going in the format is going to come from y'all's power, and communicating with the teachers. So, here tonight, though, it's, it's about more of the, more of the end goal, which I agree 100%. We have to be the better guy, communicating, thinking about communicating those actual lines. So, you, you're right, 100%.
I mean, I'm great with the end goal, I'm just saying, if you want people to approve it, sometimes we got to have
Right now, we're trying to get to the, to the end goal, that's not to confuse anything, and you said you're 100% right. Uh, but right now, it's talking about that, and keep that, so that, so that you can try to work on some of those actions.
Maybe it's going to be helpful to have acronym, she, I mean, Dr. Temple was presenting, I mean, he was saying all kinds of acronyms. So, maybe that would be helpful to parents, you know, that's the way we can get out the S L O, you know, what is an S L O? You know, with more meaning to it.
Maybe if you give an example of it to someone.
That's a great, yeah, yeah, so we can try to, yeah, I'll let you do that, as an example. And I'm going to, unless someone has to hurry, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to It was very, I was talking about the grades, exactly. They were everyone, our alchemics here in Colorado.
Well, is that not something that the parents are not being interested in? The student learning objective for their, you know, their grade A class, or second, or third class?
And maybe that's where the information would best come from. The teacher, my name is Ms. Conley. These are the SLOs I am working on in my classroom. This is.
Well, you know, if you're a ministry school, I wish they would share this over to the high schools. It's the peak of the week, because I'm, I'm sure this still goes on in high school anymore. But to know that at that level, so that, you know, that they can see what actually the objectives are. And be able to participate in that too.
What we can do, what we post at the district level, we can now send that down to every campus level. They can send information up to us. We are getting ready, we've already launched our mobile app. We are perfecting that now. We have now purchased a mass communication app that will send up today, I mean, as quickly as the remind app does. Many of our campuses use the remind app. Some of them use, you know, just different platforms. Now we will do that. Of course, our mobile app now is resized from the website, so we don't have to get it down. So a little bit of a, because we can be trying. So, you know, all of our communication methods are still moving forward.
We still suck at communicating, we're going to try to.
I'm creating a more basic page.
I do like that. All right.
Well, I want to thank you for the interest and the dialogue that we're having. And that's the only way we're going to get better, communicating better. But within the context of student outcome goals and the goal progress measures, we have also been charged with providing our superintendent with constraints. And those constraints are those behaviors and actions that are so contrary to the student outcome goals and management of the district, that we will measure the superintendent's performance based on these constraints. The superintendent shall have autonomy beyond the constraints to lead the district to achieve the student outcome goals and goal progress measures. First restraint is, the superintendent shall not allow any campuses to forego implementation of the district's initiatives to meet student progress measures. And the constraint progress measures for that are, one, all district elementary campuses will have 56% or greater of third grade students reading on grade level by 2020. And the annual targets are, school year 2016, 2017, our baseline was 17%. School year 2017, 2018, 50%. School year 2018, 2019, 67%. And school year 2019 through 2020, 100%. And the 90% GISD graduates will leave high school, college-ready, career-ready, and military-ready by 2020. And those annual targets are, school year 2016, 2017, baseline was 78%. School year 2017, 2018, 82%. School year 2018, 2019, 86%. And school year 2019, 2020, 90%. The second restraint is, the superintendent shall not allow adult convenience or preference to take priority over the academic progress of students. And the constraint progress measures are, the percentage of students at improvement-required campuses will decrease from 16% to 0% by the end of school year 2020. And that started with our baseline, school year 2016, 2017, 16%. School year 2017, 2018, 16%. School year 2018, 2019, 0%. And school year 2019, 20, 0%. The third restraint is, the superintendent shall not allow inequities in our co-curricular activities at the campus level. And the constraint progress measures are, the percentage of students participating in extracurricular activities will increase at secondary campuses. And our annual targets are, school year 2016, 2017, we're moving by 5%. School year 2017 through 2018, plus 5%. School year 2018, 2019, plus 5%. And school year 2019 through 2020, another 5%. Again, you will be asked to share your thoughts on the three superintendent constraints. And I want you to share your thoughts and any questions you might have about these particular goals or restraints. And we will record all comments and questions. If we can answer your questions tonight, we will. And those answers will be recorded, will also be recorded. We will post the comments, questions, and answers to our GSD website, as previously stated. We will engage in discussion of the comments, questions, and answers at both our finance meeting and our record board meetings later this month. The information we receive tonight and even later, we will discuss and use that to inform us in our adoption of the superintendent constraints. With that said, are there any questions or?
We do.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Colleen.
Absolutely. Okay, a lot of what, I don't like microphones, because I speak so loud, so I'll move further away. A lot of what we have already talked about, you've already given us your opinions on better ways to communicate. So the first question, after hearing about superintendent constraints and constraint progress measures, what questions do you have and clarifications can we provide? And while you are asking these questions, I'll tell you the second question, and you could maybe combine what you were thinking or asking. The second question is about better communication. How can your GISD board best communicate the progress on the superintendent constraints and constraint progress measures? So I think you've given us some very direct thoughts and ideas for us to think about as far as how we can, where we can post them, how often we should post them. You specifically talked about the board meeting once a month. We certainly could use our TV with slides that could be rolling and stay on. I think certainly we've allowed the high school and Mr. Dudus and his kids to post many things. It's now getting into the Christmas season, so you will see every Christmas program, every event at schools during the holidays. But do you have any specific questions about the superintendent constraints and progress measures of those? Yes, ma'am?
It's less of a question, I suppose the question is to make sure that I understood constraint 1.1 correctly.
Okay.
And then that maybe reconsider how it's written, because I had to read it three or four times. I think the progress measure says that you can't have some campuses pulling all the weight to give you the 56%. So every campus has 56% of their third graders reading on grade level.
Yes, district-wide.
Okay. It took me a few times to get that from the way it's written.
Okay.
Perpaps, as a suggestion on the annual targets, 17% is one school of our six elementary school campuses. I know that the number of campuses can change, especially, who knows what's going on? But at least just putting that in for rent is meaningful. So I know that I would have the original goal.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'd say, just adding to the communication, I think sometimes we don't do a good job in general, as I've made clear tonight, but especially even with some of our comments tonight of reaching some of the lower-income folks that maybe aren't accessing the website or watching us on TV, which I don't know why anyone wouldn't, but apparently some people don't. So if you guys have any ideas about reaching some of those folks, I think that'd be great. I mean, I think we might have to do door knocks and walk around and actually go to where people are. So if you guys have any feedback on that, that'd be great. Hey, thank you all so much for being here. I know it's a couple hours out of your night, so we really, really appreciate it. And please, look at this, you guys have the notes with you. Take them home with you, think about it more, share it with friends and family, and especially maybe share it with friends and family who you think maybe haven't thought about some of this stuff. Because we want to only, we don't want to not only reach y'all, but we want to reach those people too. Ms. Cor, your time is done.
I know, I know, but this was quick.
I yielded my time.
I don't like it. You're going to have to be here next Wednesday for the next town hall?
That's, that's.
All right, go ahead, Ms. Cor.
So you have another town hall on the 13th, right?
We do.
This is a pretty small old show.
It is.
Monica had suggested, and it's a great idea, why don't you roll in with the pictures with Santa? You will have the mother lode of people show up.
That's really smart, actually. I like those ideas, because usually, and I'm saying this out here, is oftentimes the people that we really want to count are people that don't need to count. And so I think that's a really good idea, is, is meeting people where they are. And I do think that we have to do, this is part of our, another thing that we're talking about, is actually going to them, and that means going to.
Andy Turpacc has been Santa at Ovi for years. I bet you can do it for y'all too.
I like it a whole lot.
I have a Santa suit.
Okay, Monica just volunteered.
I'm not dressing up.
Monica just volunteered to be Santa. Okay, so just real quickly, just because this will be televised, the town halls are going to be different places next week at a different night on purpose. So it'll be Wednesday night at Coastal Village Elementary and, help me out. And. At Collegiate Academy. So different places, different night. All right, so talk to those people, please do. And really, we do value you guys and your opinion, and we, we know that it's a privilege to represent y'all. So thank you guys for that. But honestly, please, Ms. Wagner, your time.
So you have a school board meeting also on the 13th, and that's been.
No, the week, the week after.
You have to move to the next. Okay, I have not checked the website, so, thank you.
Well, you should have with our new and updated, modern website. All right, so we really are interested in your ideas. Please tell, please tell us. We, we want to know, this is the whole point. We cannot, according to this Lone Star Governance, we cannot finalize any of this until we meet with y'all. We want to meet with you guys. Tell them to come to the next town hall. And we hope that you guys join us in our mission, which is to educate, engage, and empower every student for life of excellence. Thank you guys again, have a good night, be careful, stay warm and dry, and all that. All right, thank you all high again.